So next up is a timely panel, a discussion on insurer and consumer readiness. And an issue that weighs heavily on the minds of our commissioners, policyholders, and the public. So I'm pleased to introduce our four panelists. They will be Ms. Susan K. Neely, President of the American Council of Life Insurers, Mr. Matt Als, President and Chief Executive Officer of America's Health Insurance Plan, Dr. David Sampson, President and CEO of American Property Casualty Insurance Association, and Sarah Leake, one of NAIC's Consumer Representatives and Senior Policy Analyst for the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities. So thank you all for being here. We will allow each of our panelists about five minutes for our remarks, and then we'll have some questions and answers. So we will go in the order of introduction. So Ms. Neely, welcome.
Well, thank you, President Farmer, for this opportunity to talk with you and our nation's insurance commissioners. First, I begin by saying thank you. We know you're operating under extraordinary pressure. Your first priority is for the constituents that you serve. Like us, you're either already in remote working or moving to that. It only complicates things, and we are very grateful, as always, for your service, but particularly now when our states and country need you so most, need you most. Like you, the families you serve are top priority. We believe life insurance was built for moments like this to make sure that no family has to go through hard times without kind of security and support. And of course, thanks to our careful planning, smart investments, and strict compliance with our excellent state regulatory system, we feel we're prepared to support those families. In fact, life insurers really are essential businesses, and we believe strongly it's critical that we remain open in these times to deliver on the service that we want to deliver on to your constituents. So let me get to the meat of it. I appreciate the need for brevity and want to first begin by answering the questions that we know are on the commissioners' minds. First, are life insurers prepared to meet their obligations? Yes, we are. There's be no question about this. We are ready to deliver benefits as promised to families and businesses affected by COVID-19. Our financials are strong because state-based regulation works. Just look at 2008 for proof of that fact. Second, are life insurers, life insurance companies across the country equipped to avoid disruptions in service? Yes, we are. Our companies are taking actions. Among them, we've instituted work-from-home policies to ensure uninterrupted service. We staff call centers with remote workforces. We've taken practical steps like expanding e-signature technology. We've deployed cross-trained teams to areas of greatest need. We've activated alternative underwriting and are exploring every possible way to underwrite insurance products without paramedical contact. Now, at this point, each and every day, insurers work with policyholders who are asking for accommodations due to natural disasters or unforeseen developments, and the coronavirus pandemic is no exception. Third question, are life insurers prepared to help savers and retirees through a volatile market? Yes, we are. Our guarantees provide peace of mind to consumers that their money will be there when they need it. Fourth, are life insurers stepping up to support their communities? Yes, we are. Through their foundations, our companies are lending a hand of contributions to local community food banks and local and national nonprofits during the COVID outbreak. Those are some of the questions we believe are top of your mind. Of course, happy to answer others. I wanted to use the balance of my time to just share some thoughts we have on how we can keep operating, keep business as close to usual as possible in this national emergency. We do have some recommendations, and I shared these in a letter to all the commissioners earlier this week. I thank and acknowledge all the states that have already started implementing these accommodations, and just wanted to highlight three of our recommendations now. First, state shelter-in-place orders are picking up in pace, and state insurance commissioners are our best advocates, making sure insurance is deemed essential. I know Matt and Dave, my distinguished colleagues, will speak to this as well, but I think we're united in saying that this is so important. I want to thank New York and California for deeming insurance as an essential service already, but we stand ready to work with all the commissioners and outreach to your governors to make sure that we're not forgotten in this process and are there to support you in your engagement with your governors in your state. Second, providing practical leadership and regulatory accommodations that also favor the consumer will allow innovations to quickly meet consumer needs in ways unimaginable just a few months prior. Embracing practical regulatory deadlines and approaches to rate and form filings, licensing requirements, will solve many challenges during this period in which we're operating and even beyond. Third, our members report that many states have made data requests relating to COVID-19 preparedness. These requests are not uniform and generally have a very short turnaround time. So we ask with all respect that if there's a way that NAIC can help its member states coordinate these requests, it will just facilitate our ability to respond promptly and, again, keep business as close to usual as possible. So we'll continue to share these and other ideas. I'm always happy to answer your questions. In closing, I'd just say we know we must plan for a long road of economic rebuilding. It's life insurers' job to look ahead, and in this case, that means toward economic recovery and future certainty. As always, we will work close with our partner trade associations, Matt and Dave and their organizations, as well as LIMRA, LOMA, NAPA, ALU, IRI, SIFMA, FSI, and the Chambers of Commerce at the national and state level. We believe our collaboration will be a force multiplier in the months to come as we lock arms to help the American and world economies recover. No question that we are all in this together. We enjoyed great collaboration with our state regulators, all of you, in the past, and I am confident that we will continue to do so as we work together to help our consumers, communities, and country rebuild. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thanks to all of you for all you do.
Thank you, Ms. Neely. We certainly appreciate your remarks. We'll be in regulator-to-regulator session later on, and I think we'll be discussing some of those issues you brought up. But we also appreciate you reciting just about every letter in the alphabet as well. So we'll move on to Mr. Als.
President Farmer, commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. It really is a privilege and an honor to share some of the information that the health insurance community has been working on tirelessly over the last several weeks. And there are really two main things that I'd like to cover. First really is what health insurers are doing right now and how we're working with states and other stakeholders, really to address what's an unprecedented challenge facing our country right now. And second, ask for your help in a couple of areas where we think it would be useful to work more closely together to make sure that we're streamlining some of our efforts. So let me just step back for a second and talk about some of the health insurance provider community's efforts. And it's hard to believe that March 5th was our last in-person board meeting before things really shut down. The meeting was really consumed by COVID-19 and what our industry was going to do. And two weeks in current time now seems like a lifetime ago, just given the developments and changes that we've had. But at that time, our board expressed a strong commitment that we wanted to make sure that out-of-pocket costs were not a barrier to people, thinking testing and treatment, that carriers had committed to waive cost sharing on testing for COVID-19 and taking other important actions to ease network referral, prior authorization, and other requirements. Right now, our industry is working very hard with others to focus on how we increase medical capacity and testing, enhance the national supply of critical medical equipment required to meet unprecedented demand, protect our frontline healthcare workers, and improve treatment for patients at the end of the day. On Wednesday, we sent a letter with 18 other organizations saying that this was really the most critical first step right now, as we expect the coming weeks to get worse with respect to the impact on patients and consumers. One other side note, we're also very focused on what's happening with the Congress right now. While states are an important area, we know that efforts within Congress right now are very focused on stimulus and how we can protect consumers, and that's going to be an important area with implications for health insurance providers and some connections back to states. So just a few examples of what health insurance providers are doing in the states right now. In addition to waiving cost sharing for testing, allowing faster refills for 30 and 90 days with an allowance there, making sure that consumers are educated and know how to approach this, especially if they suspect that they may be infected with COVID-19. The last thing that we actually want to do is to have people going directly to the hospital right now to try and seek testing. We want them to call and figure out the best approach about what they should do, given what their symptoms are, working with our members on a 24/7 basis, making sure hotlines are available, providing transportation if necessary for medical appointments, providing care packages to people who are diagnosed with the condition, and working with our PBM partners to make sure that we address any potential shortages with respect to the pharmacy supply chain and making sure that we don't have unnecessary shortages or delays in terms of people being able to fill their prescriptions. At AHIP, we're trying to act as a clearinghouse of information for the industry across our 140 member health insurance provider organizations, and we want to make sure, including information sharing, is occurring with NAIC on a regular basis to make sure that we're sharing all applicable state and federal guidances, because right now, things are changing so rapidly. Frankly, it's hard to keep track of what's happening from day to day, and we want to make sure that we're being a helpful partner in terms of sharing that information across the entire healthcare ecosystem. We really appreciate that states are on the front lines of having to address the crisis with several agencies taking first steps on carrier requirements. We have been cataloging, as I mentioned, state practices, and just today have released a document that outlines what we hope will be some best practices among the states and including recommendations that we hope will be useful. We know that that will be circulated to everyone who is here on the webinar today. With respect to recommendations in those documents, we've included a couple of areas, and I'll just highlight a few. First is with respect to communications, and we know that each state has a unique set of laws and regulations that best fit the needs of their populations. But during an emergency, whenever feasible, we think it would be helpful for states to try to align with operational procedures. Doing so will help health insurance providers to more easily make operational changes that are necessary right now. And one area where I would stress is just the need for flexibility, because again, as information and guidance and just developments are changing so quickly, flexibility is very, very important. We would also hope that states could collaborate and communicate with carriers as operational mandates are being considered in order to ensure that they can be feasibly implemented, making any clarifications around timing for making changes, and discussing whether there are alternative goals that could be leveraged. Again, trying to be as flexible as possible right now. With respect to the issue of reporting, it would be very helpful right now for states to balance the need with oversight, which we completely support and understand, with the need to devote time and resources toward responding to the needs of our own members and communities, facilitating ongoing communications with our enrollees and clinicians who are on the front lines and responding to state-required COVID-related mandates, which we know are changing on a daily basis. So at this time, we would strongly urge for reporting requirements at this time to be critical, to be focused, and limited to data with a clear regulatory purpose. We would hope that they would be limited to benefits and coverage, preparedness plans, education for members, and solvency, which we all know are so important. And just given, again, the speed and frequency of changes that we're seeing, that we want to work very closely with you all on the timing and content of any essential reporting. Just a couple of final comments before I close. Some other areas where we're very focused, telehealth, as you can imagine, right now, working very closely with states to suspend any barriers to allow for telehealth. As we all know how the disease is transmitted, we think encouraging telehealth to the maximum extent possible to keep people out of the emergency room, to keep them out of physicians' offices where possible is important, and eliminating any barriers to telehealth will be important. And also being mindful, we're very mindful of issues with respect to price gouging and balanced billing right now, and we really appreciate the leadership position of state regulators in these areas and thank those states that have taken action in that regard. Finally, with respect to NAIC committee work, we know that this is such an uncertain time where we're all trying to balance so many different issues. We would hope that you would consider how we move forward with some of the really critical work that the committees are doing and trying to balance those efforts right now as we look at ways to increase capacity within the system. We've all seen the reports about how the disease is spreading and the increase, and part of that is due to testing, but we all know that the next few weeks and months will be very, very challenging. But please know that health insurance providers are working 24/7 and partnering with states in all areas to make sure that we are ready to protect and serve the consumers who need coverage and care at this really critical time for the nation. So thank you for a few minutes today. Look forward to any questions that you might have in the remaining time.
Thank you, Mr. Als, for those great comments. This is a trying time for all of us, and as Ms. Neely said earlier, we are all in this together. But let me assure you that every committee of the NAIC will meet within the next 30 to 45 days, and every bit of business before those committees will get handled. This is our time. We're never going to do it by virtual formats, but we are aware of those things that are on our agenda now and those things that are coming on our agenda because of COVID-19. But we appreciate your cooperation throughout this entire process. Now, Dr. Sampson, welcome.
Well, thank you, President Farmer. Appreciate the invitation very much. Obviously, all of our systems are experiencing many stress points as you, as well as our members, work remotely. I just want to assure all of you that we're committed as America's property casualty insurers to work closely with the NAIC and state regulators to ensure a smooth and very successful and coordinated response to the current environment. In these unprecedented conditions, there are several important issues that I wanted to raise with you all today for your immediate consideration by the NAIC and the state regulators. First, the more the NAIC can help with data calls to make them uniform, limited in scope, and reasonable in timing, the more insurers will be able to focus on our core customer service obligations. That's, I think, a consistent theme that you heard earlier in this panel. Secondly, many states in the past have requested that insurers be flexible or show forbearance regarding premium due dates, cancellation on renewal requirements, and other deadlines that can be disrupted in a catastrophe situation. We're starting to see similar requests now, and we would ask that such requirements be consistent with prudent insurance principles and similar across state lines and across lines. For example, if insurers allow policyholders to make late payments after the due date has passed, normal accounting treatment would not allow insurers to treat the payment as an account receivable, and states and disasters sometimes let insurers continue to treat the expected late payments as receivables. Third, it will be increasingly important, I think, that insurers are allowed to deploy new technologies, and some of those have already been mentioned today, drones, mobile applications, telemedicine, for workers' compensation lines without running afoul of regulatory barriers. And again, I think that's consistent with what you've heard earlier in this panel. The relaxation of requirements for first-class mail delivery and allowing electronic delivery for all communications to customers, the NAIC and state insurance departments will facilitate better communications at this critical time. And we would encourage regulators to avoid implementing demands on the content of consumer communications, and if there are necessary communications mandates, that they be as uniform and flexible as possible. Six, we're urging states to be flexible in administering and enforcing statutory time restrictions related to claims handling, notification obligations, third-party administrator audits, and regulatory filings, for example. And finally, and most importantly, it's vitally important to discourage efforts to impose retroactive coverage on insurance policies. If policymakers force insurers to cover losses that do not exist or are not covered under current insurance contracts, the stability of the sector could be dramatically impacted. You've heard earlier in the previous panel, we're solid, we're well-capitalized, but that is for existing policies in force and the coverages that have been underwritten, priced, and sold. Insurers recognize our critical role in protecting the economy and the nation's consumers, recognize that we're facing unprecedented disruption. However, retroactively mandating insurance payouts for coverage that was never sold will have dramatic repercussions. The money that is in reserve is not our money. It's there to pay the policies for all of the consumers, both commercial and personal lines that exist today. So we stand ready to work with policymakers. I think there are some of these issues that are of such scale, especially on the business interruption issue, that it's going to require a federal government solution. And from our perspective at APCIA, we have been involved in intense discussions daily, multiple times a day with the White House, with the Congress and the Senate on what those national responses and perhaps should look like, not only to deal with the current disruption, but prospectively to try to address pandemic coverages in the future. And with that, Director Farmer, we will look forward to your questions at the end of the panel.
Thank you, Dr. Sampson. This is, as I said earlier, certainly a trying time for everybody, but for the three of you that are leading the industries, prominent trade organizations and companies that are your members and others, this is the time during catastrophes, normally they're disasters, but this is the time that insurance companies, it's their time to shine. And so far, so good. So we appreciate what each of you have done, the flexibility that you have shown so far, and the flexibility you'll show in the future. Now, Ms. Leake, we would be delighted to hear from you.
Great, thank you. People, all of us on this call, as well as people all around the country, are dealing with a public health emergency, as you know, fearful about the impact this virus may have on all of our health, our family members' health, and on our communities. At the same time, we're all worried about the economic effects of this crisis, lost jobs, the reduced incomes, shuttered businesses, and a likely recession. As the NAIC and state insurance commissioners work to support people during this crisis, the NAIC consumer representatives who focus on health issues have compiled a set of four principles we hope will guide you. What I'm about to discuss is by no means a comprehensive list, and not every health consumer representative or their organization is advocating for all ideas I'm about to mention, but with events moving so quickly, both in terms of the disease and in the response to it, we are hoping these will be top of mind for you as you confront challenges in your state and continue to advocate for policy changes at the federal level. So number one, maximize access to comprehensive health coverage so people can access the care they need. More limited coverage, like short-term health plans or coverage that triggers only if a person becomes ill, will be less successful at achieving the goals of getting people to proactively seek testing and treatment, providing them with access to care that they need and protecting them and their families from excessive financial burdens. Instead, people need broader access to Medicaid and coverage through the health insurance marketplace. Congress can take further steps to improve access and take-up of Medicaid and make it easier and more affordable for people to access ACA marketplace coverage, particularly if they lose their job and employment-based coverage or see their incomes fall. More states can adopt the ACA Medicaid expansion, and more states that run their own exchanges, as well as the federal government, can increase and smooth access to special enrollment periods or FCPs in the marketplace. I'm saddened to see AHIP and BCDSA support a proposal this morning for a temporary FCP for all marketplace plans and one that would be available to people whether they have had health insurance coverage or have been uninsured. Depending upon how long such an FCP might be available, it may also be important to create a job loss FCP with minimal red tape and other hurdles to promote comprehensive coverage amid the heavy job losses that are expected and are already starting. In addition, affordability of premiums will continue to be an issue, not just for those people with incomes over the federal premium tax credit cutoff of 400% of the poverty line, but also for people with lower incomes who are currently eligible for subsidies or who may become eligible for the premium tax credits in the marketplace amid the economic downturn. Even with improvements to Medicaid in the marketplace, people will fall through the cracks and remain uninsured, and it's critical to keep those folks in mind as well and to provide the healthcare services that they need. Number two, find ways to ease the financial strain and support of the people's ability to comply with social distancing measures. In addition to paid leave, improved access to unemployment insurance, food assistance, rental and housing assistance, and other non-health supports, people will need easier access to prescription drug refills, telemedicine services, and mental health care, especially as this crisis continues. Please keep in mind those people in your state who may be more vulnerable or have specific needs that need to be addressed, people with health conditions, people who have disabilities, and individuals and families with low incomes, among others. Social distancing is challenging for everyone, but some people will have far greater difficulties than other complying with the requirement. Number three, ensure coverage of important health benefits as well as cost protections related to treatment and detection of the virus. Patients will need access to treatment at no or low out-of-pocket cost as well as protection from surprise medical bills. It's important to note that federal policymakers are exploring ambitious ideas to help people with out-of-pocket costs. States should do what they can and should also closely monitor where the federal government may be able to help relieve some of the pressure. Number four, continue to protect consumers from fraud and scams. When people are afraid for their health and their well-being, they can be vulnerable to these kinds of problems. State insurance commissioners are already warning people in their states about attempts to sell false products and treatments, solicit donations for coronavirus patients, and collect consumers' personal information via bogus emails and phone calls. Thank you for your continued attention in that area. I wanted to note that there's other NAIC consumer representatives who focus on life and PNC insurance issues, and I wanted to carry to you today some of the key points that they have been making. By no means, again, a comprehensive list, but some of the ideas that they have put forward are auto insurance premium offsets, noting that there's a big drop-off in claims for auto insurance at this time, a warrantarium on insurance credit scoring, because we don't want to see consumers penalized who are victims of economic conditions or of government requirements, and also scrutiny of credit-related coverage. And we and the PNC folks are happy to continue to work with you in this crisis and to continue to talk with all the stakeholders about ideas that can help protect consumers. Thank you so much for your continued attention to protecting consumers in such an uncertain time. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Leake, for those great remarks. As you very well know, we have two main responsibilities as regulators. As you very well know, we have two main responsibilities as regulators. The number one, in my opinion, is protection of our consumers, and we certainly appreciate the support of our consumer representatives to the NAIC. So once again, we've gotten to the point of the program where we don't have time for questions, but each panelist, rest assured that the questions will be directed to you, and we appreciate your answers. We'll post those answers on our website in a timely fashion. But thank you to all of our panelists, and we want to continue with our open, ongoing lines of communications. For the trade associations, you've asked us to provide regulatory relief where possible, and certainly that is a strong consideration. But we'll also know that you'll continue to provide the relief that our consumers certainly need at this point in time. So thank you all.